Selectment, Board of Commissioners meeting. Mr. Crowley is not going to be here tonight and Mr. Ruchel will be here in a little 15 minutes or so, so we'll start the meeting. And first thing is public comment. Does anybody have anything they want to say? They can come up forward. Anybody? John, you want to come up?
I can come up now, sure, if you'd like.
It's up to you. If you have something new you want to say, that's fine.
My name's John Schlichty. I live at 58 Central Street in West Boylston. And the reason that I'm here this evening is because I previously filed an open meeting law complaint. And I am here in the event that any of you have any questions that you would like to ask me. Basically, the complaint involves the fact that I was invited to come for public comment by the town administrator because there were concerns that I had, that I thought would be things that the Board of Selectment members should know. And what I did was I prepared comments for the evening. I had a couple of questions that I had intended to ask. In the section on the public comments, it says you can ask, you can express your concerns and ask questions. I specifically was careful not to target anyone in regards to the concerns that I had. And during the conversation, as is in the minutes and is on the video for that evening, I was told, there's no comments. This is, excuse me, this is public comment, there's no questions. So that's the basis for my concern. There are a number of issues that I feel that with my background and having maintained my interest in public access TV that the Board of Selectmen should be aware of. Many of those were documented during my conversation on that evening. And I am hoping that you will just verify that the public comment does allow questions. And if I was indeed told no questions at that time, maybe there was some misinterpretation, maybe you felt I was overstepping my bounds in some way or another. I did not. But, you know, I can get into some specifics, but let me just leave it at that. You can ask me questions. But I am aware that there are many things that I feel Board of Selectmen members were not made aware of, that you should be aware of, about what was either not being done or was not working. I know there are some transitions going on. There's been a lot of progress made. I'll just mention one example, that in part is in the comment made previously. I was concerned that when West Boylston Public Access TV was hiring new people, that they were doing so without accurate job descriptions. They were very obvious flaws. The production assistant and the access coordinator duties for each were listed verbatim, word for word. The Personnel Board looked over the job descriptions in July. It was not until August that the PEG Board actually met. And I had concerns about, well, is this something that the PEG Board was recommending? Needless to say, it's been over a year. I know they've been working on it, but that's what they told me several months ago, it hasn't been done. I was very much in favor of the town administrator's proposal to reorganize West Boylston Public Access TV. And when the proposal was made, and if I had a prepared document, I'd have all the dates, but I believe it was in June of 2017, the positions were outlined, and one of them was the PEG Coordinator. And we were told at that time that a job description would be developed and it would be subject to Personnel approval, just for your general information as we've gone through. And certainly, you have voted for, or had on your agenda, at least nine people during the current fiscal year. As of yet, there has not been an approved job description for a PEG Coordinator or for the PEG Equipment Coordinator. Now, personnel change over time, and if you're going to recruit new people, you're going to need an actual, an accurate job description, as opposed to saying, well, nobody's going to want to apply for this salary or whatever. There's been no problem in getting people based on how many people have been presented before you that you've approved. Now, I'm not saying there are too many people, because the production assistants are essentially working on an as-available basis. So you actually need more people that you can draw on from their available schedules. So, in closing, if you decide later you want to ask me a question, I know you had an extension to look over the video, look over the minutes for the January 17 meeting. I will say until you deal with the complaint and so forth.
We are going to bring that up later on, so stick around and we'll see what happens. Thank you, John. Appreciate it. David else from Public? Anything? Hearing nothing? Okay. Approval of meeting minutes, March 21, 2018, regular session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. March 21, 2018, executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. April 4, 2018, regular session.
So moved.
I wasn't here. I don't believe it. Nancy, I wasn't here on that one, correct? April 4? Do you? I don't remember. I get confused.
It says you're present, April 4.
Okay. Thank you. I couldn't find it.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
April 4, 2018, executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Warrants?
Review and vote to approve warrants for the period covering April 5, 2018 to April 18, 2018. Payable warrants for the Town FY 2018, 41 and 42. Airroll warrants FY 2018, number 21. School warrants FY 2018, dash S17, and municipal light plant warrants FY 18, number 23.
Second.
Any discussion on the warrants? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, new business.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Sorry.
Are we going to take action on authorizing someone to handle the?
Yes. Okay. All right, so.
I also made a mistake on the March 21. That's why I was getting confused. I was not here. So, we're going to have to.
Okay.
Now that Chris is here, we can redo those minutes. I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
Let's go back to that then. Chris, Shawna was not here for the March 21, so she's going to be.
Okay.
All right, so March 21, 2018, regular session.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You got abstained.
Abstained.
And March 21, 2018, executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm the coos.
Yes, okay. All right, then we're going to, for the town, the warrant for next week, Roger's not going to be here, Pat's out of town. We think he's going to be back Tuesday morning, but we're not sure. We just want to do a backup plan in case something, he's not here in time. So, do we need all three? What do you need for signatures?
You can authorize another person to be a signatory.
So, we authorize Shawna or Chris to be a signature for the, for next week?
Are you going to be allowed?
Those two, you'll be here next week sometime.
Yeah.
And it would be a backup. If Pat's available, he'll do it, but if.
It's a backup.
Yeah.
Oh, so, okay.
So either one.
I'll be.
All right. All right, so Roger, you make that motion?
I make a motion to authorize, to sign the warrants, Mr. Ruchel or Ms. Bonson, for this week.
I'll second that, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. New business, town meeting warrant article list.
So, you have in front of you the updated version of the warrant article list. This represents 37 articles. There may be some that we're going to be able to remove before we actually finalize the warrant. But at this point, we have the standard articles, which include the reports of the committees and officers, our annual authorization to borrow, annual authorization for Chapter 90. We have tentatively two articles for the personnel policy, one of which may be removed as we're not ready yet to reassign the grade schedule, but we would move ahead with the 2 percent COLA. It would set the salaries for elected officials. We would do spending from FY 18 appropriations, prior year bills. We actually do have one prior year bill that we will need to have town meeting approve. We have the sewer enterprise budget, the omnibus budget. We have an article that we're setting aside $24,000 for the FY 19 wage adjustments, which would be as a result of the compensation study. We have the capital investment projects to be determined. The capital committee has not yet made final decisions. Then we have several items that are not capital items, they're outside the eligibility, and those include a new mower for parks, a new garage lift for DPW, new snow blower attachment for DPW, and a sprinkler system for town hall. We have our standard article for the sunset clause for prior capital appropriations. We may be able to remove this, it may not be needed, we're trying to figure that out. We have an article for additional wells and monitoring for the landfill to comply with DEP's mandate about the tracking of the 1-4 dioxane. We have our funding for the elderly community services program. We have a small warrant article for a police department promotion assessment center. They need to do testing for sergeant position. We have the three union contracts, which I'm hoping will be ready for town meeting approval, they may not be. Those are the police union, fire union, cemetery union. The parks department is requesting $12,000 for additional field maintenance supplies. I'm hoping I can tuck that into the actual operating budget, but if not, that will stay as a warrant article. We have depositing into the stabilization fund, depositing into the capital fund, depositing into the unemployment fund. We have some transfer funds with cemetery department. We have the new establishment of the bylaw for the revolving funds. That's a new mandate based from the Municipal Modernization Act. It has to go into effect this year. We have annual CPC allocations. We have some funding into the revolving fund for the ZBA and conservation. Second one is a typo. Just to build up their funds, they, because their fees were lower, they had been running over on those two funds. We need to replenish them to allow the new fees that they've established, the ability to rebuild their funds.
Are we talking about these, or you're just going to?
No, I'm just listing them out. We'll be talking about them in more detail at the next meeting.
Okay. So, the typos, the add 6,500 is supposed to be 2,500?
No, so the, the.
It says 2,500 under amount.
Right, so the, there's two. So the ZBA revolving fund is 6,500, and it should be conservation revolving fund 2,500.
So then, the second one. So, you're just telling, I mean, because, I'm just curious why we're putting money into these funds? Years ago, we put revolving accounts for those groups. We weren't, we weren't budgeting these groups.
Correct.
Why are they now needing close to $10,000 to run their organizations?
Their revenues were not keeping up with the expenditure for the wages for their clerk. So, they have changed their fee schedule, and the expectation is that moving ahead, their fee schedule will now keep up with the demands of the wages for their activity. But, they have been running low. If you may recall, last year, we had to put additional funds into the conservation wage line item because they were running low for their clerk wages. So, both the ZBA chair and the Conservation Commission chair were asking that we put a one-time extra funding into the revolving fund to help them rebuild that, so that moving ahead, their revenues will cover their expenditures.
I mean, are they, are they having, are they having that many more meetings that they're, they're needing to? Is their secretary working that much more? Is she spending more hours? Is it, is it only because they don't have money, or is it because they're spending a lot more?
We have the chairman of the ZBA here, perhaps he could answer your question.
Oh, that's fine.
It's because of all the activities that, that is incorporated in what she has to do, not just with the meetings and stuff, but, you know, doing the minutes and answering emails, answering phone calls, I mean, you know, getting information to people. I mean, they're always calling, and she's, she's our only source, and so that, that's all time-consuming.
I do think, you know, 6,500 is a lot of money. So, we should, I think, you know, we should take a look at it, what's going on there. Maybe, is there any cost cutting over there? You know, CPC is asking, CONCOM is asking 2,500, whereas ZBA is 6,500. So, how, so this one, how come next, what will happen next year? Are we going to ask the same amount?
The hope is that the fee modifications that have been made will cover the expenditures moving forward.
I think, you know, maybe, you know, for me, you know, I think there should be some, some kind of, some sorts of cost cutting over there.
Can I ask, what kind of increases have we put in to cover?
We, we went to the, to the Finance Committee and asked for a, a transfer of $1,000 because we had gotten an email from the town accountant that we were like $800, $750 or $800 in the hole.
No, I think what she's asking is.
Modification of your fees?
Oh, the modification?
Yeah.
We increased them almost, almost between $50 and $100 on each.
On each fee?
On each one.
Based on the usage or an average over the last couple of years?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's why you're saying that you think that will cover the future?
That's what we're hoping.
Okay.
So, I mean. But getting back to Roger's point, why is ZBA so much more than CONCOM?
Because of the type of board that the ZBA is, the judicial, our minutes can be anywhere from, you know, five to 15, 18 pages, because when we have public hearings, everybody that talks, she has to make sure that all that gets, you know, into the minutes, because if for some reason, we have to go to court, that's what town council is looking for. They want to know who talked and what they said. And they, they're actually, you know, in cases where we had to go to court, town council has actually called these people, you know, read the minutes and called the people and to verify, you know, that this is what they said. And the minutes take, that's, that's the biggest thing, is the minutes, it's very time-consuming. It's not like, you know, you just sit there, take minutes and, you know, and, you know, it's one or two pages. It has to be, especially when there's a public hearing. The other thing that we've decided to do now is, and we've contacted through, through the town administrator, we've contacted the town council and asked them, because when I first got on the board, and Mr. Hadley was on the board when they changed over the, the zoning board, when we had got the new board on board, and town council had came and given us the direction, I was under the impression when she was talking, is that because of the board type of board we're, we had to meet every single month. And because all of this was happening, especially with, you know, the fees and, you know, running low on money, I went to the town administrator and I asked her if we could contact town council and, you know, get a just, you know, get a understanding of this. And she said that if we don't have a public hearing scheduled for the month, and we don't have, you know, a lot of information that needs to be discussed, we can, we can go a month or so without having a meeting. And we've done that, like last year, during the month of December, we didn't have any meeting. We had no public hearings, nothing. We've got that same thing scheduled. And now, we're doing the same thing. If we don't have a public hearing, and we don't have a lot of items on the agenda, then we won't have a meeting, we won't have a meeting. We'll skip a month. So, hopefully that, and then, like I said, we raised the, the fees to kind of offset this, but we just don't want to make, we just want to make sure that, you know, we can build this back up again, and then hopefully, this is the last time, hopefully this will be the last time we ask. So, we're just hoping it's going to be a one-time thing, and we're like, Mrs. Bonson, you know, asked about the fees. Hopefully with the increase of the fees, you know, it all depends on, you know, how many public hearings we get. You know, people put in for special permits or variance or whatever. But, the minutes and the communications of people sending emails and telephone calls, you know, and our secretary, she's also the same secretary for the, for the conservation. She has, you know, two boards that she's dealing with, and, you know, she comes in at night, she works on Saturdays, she comes in on Sundays, you know, to kind of catch up with everything, so, you know.
I think this is the first time, you know, this is the first year, any funding request.
No, we did last year.
On a ZBA?
No, we transferred. We didn't put anything in the budget last year, so.
No, it was, it was this transfer at a million.
Of $1,000?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I'd ask the town administrator, you know, besides, to maybe look, is this, all these things that he talks about didn't change this year. We've always had to keep minutes, we, she's always answered calls.
That's true.
She's always answered email. Is there that many more public hearings now? Is, is, I mean, 100, if the fee goes up $100, I don't know how that's going to cover $6,500.
I think, I think the, the important thing here is that they, they have already started their cost-cutting measures. They are not meeting when there's no time-sensitive activity in front of the board, so that's going to be a major change. You know, they, they're looking to establish templates to improve some of the process for, you know, for the application. So, I, you know, I think they're on the right road here. I think the question is, is it better to try to be proactive and provide an influx of cash now, or would it be better to see how it goes throughout the fiscal year and then ask the Finance Committee to, you know, if indeed they find themselves running short, ask the Finance Committee to provide, you know, to consider another transfer again? You can approach it both ways. The chairman, though, we're looking to be proactive and try to put that cushion in to help them rebuild with the new fees that they've established.
So, the secretary, she works, is she scheduled so many hours a week?
She is, and I don't.
Only as needed?
She's, well, as needed, but it, for the ZBA, David, it.
It's, she works about six hours a week. Comes out to about 20, 20, 24 hours or 25 hours for the month.
For the ZBA or for both?
For the ZBA.
Okay, I mean, I, if you can just get some information, I guess, for when we go over the.
Yeah, when we review the warrant, absolutely.
And to go along with that, could we find out, see some history over the last, like I was asking, your last two years, to see if they've had 10 last year or the year before? And last year, they had 20 meetings. I'd like to see that, because if we're saying on an average meeting, she's spending two hours, I'm just guessing, what her time is being allocated to, and I'd also like to see, to go with the CONCOM.
Good question. So, we'll give you a, a meeting history for both, we'll give you revenue, revenue and expenditures for both for the past few years. Thank you.
The big thing was, is that the 40B project, that brought in a lot of money, okay? And now that that project is over with, that has depleted, and we have not had as many public hearings as we have. But that was, that 40B project was the one that was keeping us above water.
Okay, thanks.
Can you just get us the balance in their account till when you, when we come together again on this? And just the other one, the PACS maintenance, is that, is that new, or did we always give 12,000 to the PACS?
That's increased. They, last year, I believe, they asked for $8,000. This year, they were looking to increase it. There's already, I believe it's $24,000 built into the DPW operating budget for various different parks-related expenses, but the Parks Commissioner's saying that they wanted to do a better job at the, you know, the treatment of the turf, and that this is what they felt was necessary for additional fertilizer, et cetera, to handle that.
Well, then, we'll be.
So, we have a few others. We have, we have to amend a bylaw to allow the town clerk to make non-substantive edits to, to an adopted bylaw. This came about because the town clerk was looking to make the updates to the bylaws based on past town meeting improvements, and in doing that, she noticed that there, there is a lot of formatting changes that should be made to make it more readable, more user-friendly. Town council said you cannot make tho, even those minor edits without town meeting authorizing the town clerk to make those non-substantive edits. So she's asking that that article be considered. The Board of Assessors is looking to change the tax abatement amount for active-duty military to up to 100 percent, and they're looking to increase the income threshold for the state tax credit. They're also looking to reduce the interest on the deferred taxes to be 5 percent. And then we have a request for an article for moratorium on the recreational marijuana.
So, these aren't in any order yet, you're still working?
Not in any order yet.
Formal vote on the active employees' health insurance plan?
We have Ken Lombardi back with us again tonight.
That was, she was here a few weeks ago.
Yes, so, I was here three weeks ago. Thank you for the opportunity to meet with the board again. So, an update to kind of refresh the organization as to where we stood. You'll recall that the, in working with the Insurance Advisory Committee, the employees' organization that helps the town with the review of the healthcare plan, that board of union representatives suggested to the committee that there'd be a plan change, modification made for this year, lowering the rate of increase from the health insurance proposal, which was at 8.5 percent, to about 6.1 percent. And at this point in time, we've been advised that all of the union groups have agreed to the recommendation and have proposed that the IEC recommendation be approved by the Board of Selectmen. I think we'd like to suggest to you that the, the last vote was from our teachers' organization, which was verbal. So, as a point of order, we're suggesting that the board consider the IEC recommendation with a contingent approval based on confirmation that the teachers have in fact signed off on that. We just don't have a, an email verification or written documentation from the, the school union president, other than a verbal. So, what we're asking tonight again is to have the IEC recommendation to the board approved for fiscal year 19. Happy to answer any questions.
Can we wait for the confirmation from the schools?
We sure can. We, we can do that, so that's why we're asking that if the board take any action tonight that it's based on a contingent recommendation.
What are the changes that they agreed to? Do we have anything here, or?
You should have a copy in your packet, but basically, what we're doing is we're making a change to the Fallon Select Plan by adding a very small deductible in there. It would be 250 for individual, 500 for family. And there would be no change to the Fallon Direct Care Provision.
And that will, that will be a savings when you go up?
Yep, yes. It's, the addition of the deductible accomplishes a, a cost reduction, number one, so there's a savings to the town and to the employees, and it kind of gets us on the path, there'd be future consideration for other options to modify the benefits, but it's, it steers the plan in a more contemporary fashion. And clearly, the, the goal of this is to try and create positive trend in our healthcare plan in the future. By no means is this a suggestion that we lock this in forever. I think the IEC understands, healthcare plan's going to continue to be looked at. This step is a, is a really solid way to get the membership used to the concept and the administration and the way a healthcare plan operates with the deductible, because we don't have one on the plan today.
So, there are no changes? So there are no changes from what you brought to us three weeks ago?
That's correct.
Because it all looks the same?
That's correct.
We just want to make sure everybody is in agreement.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
So can you have a motion with the, uh, someone make a motion?
Are we putting, are we doing it tonight or are we going to wait till the?
I think we'll put it tonight with the, uh, as long as the, with the thing that they will sign, yeah.
I, I would ask that the board vote it tonight conditional to, um, getting the written, um, authorization or endorsement by the teachers. And the reason is, is that we've got to start moving ahead with this. We've got the open enrollment period and, um, the accounting office is very worried that we need to get this started by the end of April in order to meet the timeframe, to get everybody, any enrollment changes done effective for July first.
So moved?
A second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, proposal, facilities manager program review and discussion.
Okay, yes, um, so we've been talking about, in generalities, about the shared facilities manager position. Um, this was a goal that the board had given to me to implement the facilities manager position for FY nineteen. And, um, I've been working with the school superintendent and business manager and the, uh, library director in putting together this program. So basically, the, the concept is that we would have one shared facility manager who would be responsible for helping with facility maintenance oversight for the Mill High School building, the Major Edwards School Building, town offices, DPW. Police station, fire station, the library, our future senior center and any other, you know, very small or miscellaneous town structures that may be erected over time. The goals and the expectations for this program basically overall is to preserve the, the investment that we have in our buildings. Um, we have put a lot of money into our buildings, especially with our recent construction and the construction about to begin. And it's important that we make sure that we are taking proper care of those buildings in terms of, um, routine maintenance and necessary repairs. The other goal is to stabilize the facilities management resources across the town. Currently, each department has, um, varying degrees of, um, time, skill set, ability to really handle the facility operations for their individual buildings. And this would provide a stable, um, oversight of those, um, uniformly across the town. It would improve the facilities maintenance and planning for all of our buildings. And the expectation is that we would see a cost savings long-term, not anticipated in the early years, but we're, we're expecting that there would be some savings over time. And part of that comes from the concept with proper maintenance, we would end up having a lower lifecycle cost for our various different, um, building components, whether it's, um, heating systems, HVAC, et cetera. That proper routine maintenance will help extend the life of those units and would lower that lifecycle cost for each of those. There's also an expectation that we'd have some savings through centralized purchasing and procurement. Examples of this would not only be supplies, but it could be things such as the, um, standardization and procurement of, um, elevator inspections or maintenance, HVAC maintenance contracts, et cetera. And a, a big component of this, now that we're a green community and we have an expectation that we would work to reduce our energy consumption by that twenty percent over the five years, uh, this individual would be responsible for, um, looking at all aspects of energy management in our buildings. And one thing that I think our department heads are looking forward to is that it would relieve those individuals from the responsibility, that heavier responsibility of facilities management, um, with the establishment of this position. It wouldn't totally eliminate this, as you'll see, if we, you know, if we, if we have time to go through the job description this evening, uh, you'll see that there's, would still be a shared responsibility. This individual would be working with the building department heads or supervisors to make decisions about various aspects. But that overall, um, planning and responsibility would be on the facilities maintenance person.
So in regards to current contracts for maintenance, you know, for the elevator use, use, for instance, each, each department now has its own?
Has its own.
Has its own contract, the school, the, the library?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Chairman, question on the cost savings. What are we thinking of long-term? Are we, like, people will ask, are we talking five years? Are we talking ten years? If we have another build, if we build something else, would this person be a project manager? Or those kind of things?
So to the degree that we would have smaller construction projects, this person would act as the clerk of the work, so to speak, for those projects. Uh, we have a legal obligation for large construction projects that are one point five million dollars or more that we have to hire the OPM. Um, but for those smaller projects, whether it's a, you know, a repair or a small reconstruction, say a window replacement or what have you, we would have this person who would be overseeing that. They'd be developing the specifications, they'd be putting it out to bid, they'd oversee the work being done and they would sign off on it being done properly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
But currently, that's, that's being done?
By the individual department heads to the degree that they're able.
It's still being done, so it's, that won't be a savings, because we don't hire a clerk of the works for small projects.
Right, that in itself would not be a savings. The savings will come about with the combined procurement of, of other supplies or services.
That's what you see.
And the improvement of the life of the different units. You know, if we're properly maintaining our HVAC units, they should last longer. If we're giving our, our boilers that routine maintenance and proper care, they should last longer. So the replacement will be less frequent and that will be a savings over time. So we'll see some upfront savings that will be faster in a few years with that combined procurement of services and supplies. The longer service, excuse me, the longer savings will come from those lowering of the lifecycle costs.
So do you think now we are not maintaining the boilers, no service at all? No, they are, right?
We, we, we are doing that, but what I'm saying is that this individual will have experience in building maintenance and will provide better oversight, perhaps make recommendations about changes in how things are being done. You know, we, we are very lucky. We have department heads who are doing the, a good job, doing the best they can and they are very active in support and management of their buildings. But they don't have the skill sets that this individual would have.
If, if, if you know the answer or if you can get it, do you know how many towns our size, with our number of buildings, have a full-time facilities person?
I, all I know-
When we look through the list, there weren't.
Yeah, we, we have, in the, management's, um, salary survey is in the back of this PowerPoint. So we'll have that list, but I'm sure there's many others that we just didn't get responses from in the survey. The key responsibilities for this individual would be to develop and implement preventive maintenance plan for all buildings. And as we've talked about it before, that preventive maintenance plan is going to be a plan that looks at annual items that need to be done, seasonal items, monthly items, weekly items, daily items. And we'll put together a plan that would then be implemented by the, the staff, whether it's for schools, it would be their custodial staff, uh, for, for the build, other townside buildings, it would be for their custodial staff. The development and implementation of a capital plan. Uh, this individual is going to be responsible for doing a thorough analysis of each of our buildings and working with that department head, that building supervisor, to start putting together, um, improved and, um, more projected capital plans for those buildings. Um, that individual will be responsible for oversight of the facilities repair and construction projects. And as I mentioned before, would oversee the Green Communities Grant and the Energy Efficiency Program and would manage those energy contracts and monitor consumption for us moving forward. The organizational structure is that we'd have the one full-time facilities manager. We would have, um, part-time clerical staff. On the school side, they have existing capacity within their clerical staff so that they would just use existing staff to do that. On the town side, we do not, I'm anticipating that we, we would need to add about five hours a week of clerical staff on the town side only. And in terms of the budgeting, um, for the first year, it's assumed that we would keep the budgeting within the lines they're currently located. Um, there would be no anticipation of any staffing plan changes in this. Um, and the director would undertake an assessment and make recommendations moving forward for future years.
So the five hours, where would we, where would we, somebody in town is going to be added five hours onto there?
We would look to see if there's anyone, uh, existing employees that would want to take on the additional five hours. If not, we would outsource it as a very part-time job.
And where would they be for an office?
For the town side, they'd be located over at DPW. The schools is going to establish a space within their, their buildings as well.
There's room at DPW?
There is.
If this person is overseeing everything, why wouldn't they be able to do the clerical? I'm, I'm questioning having a part-time clerical and maybe that was mentioned before and I missed it. I know a lot of positions, especially with so much done on computers. And most places, if you need something fixed, you go in, it's like a help desk. You send it to the facilitate, the facilitator, they look at it, they decide. So can I have some more information on why?
Sure, so of the various different duties that this facility manager is going to be responsible for, um, there will be, um, taking, um, work order requests, so to speak, um, from the various different buildings of things that need to be addressed or looked at. Um, when, when it comes to, um, the, um, procurement of different services and such, there are, there is a lot of paperwork associated with the procurement process. So the clerical would help in, in the, um, coordination of that, receipt of that, filing of that. Um, there is a lot of paperwork associated with the green community obligations, the reporting, the, um, the administration of the grant each year. We are obligated to submit quite a comprehensive annual report. So, you know, it's my expectation that this individual, if they're doing all these other proactive items that, you know, we have listed, um, that it would be more than he or she would be able to do, um, it would require some degree of clerical assistance on both the school side and the town side.
I, at this point, I, I would say I'd rather see the position stat without that and then actually see what happens. But, um, we can go through the rest of it. I just, I know it's not a lot of hours, but at the same time, we don't even know how this is going to play out until the person is here. So that is something that I would question.
For the program costs, what we're looking at is, um, the town's share and the school's share. The school administration did agree that they would share fifty percent of the program with the town, with the exception of the town's additional clerical hours. So for the facility manager salary, for the purpose of budgeting, I budgeted eighty-four thousand dollars. And that's forty-two thousand on the town side, forty-two thousand on the school side. For the clerk, at five hours a week, it's just under three thousand dollars for the year. For supplies, and this would be more of the administrative supplies, um, we're anticipating about five hundred dollars and that's shared fifty-fifty between the town and the school. And then we have miscellaneous expenses such as the, the vehicle. So we're looking at gas and maintenance of the vehicle. This would assume that we would be using the, um, the pickup truck, um, from the DPW. There would be, um, expectation that this individual would be involved in an organization for facility managers and we're expecting the dues to be approximately three hundred dollars. And then, very important thing is that because this individual will be so involved in the procurement of all of the building-related, uh, work, that involves needing a very thorough knowledge of the procurement laws, both, uh, chapter one forty-nine, which covers construction and repair of public buildings, and for the purchase of supplies, which is either done under, supplies or services, done under chapter thirty-B or at times, purchase of materials, which is done under, can be done under thirty, thirty-nine M. So it's very important that this individual has a thorough knowledge of all of the procurement laws. So I wanted to make sure that there's money in the budget annually so that individual can, um, obtain and maintain that, um, certification. So we're looking at a total budget for the year of ninety-three thousand eight hundred, of which the town side would be forty-eight thousand four hundred and the school share would be forty-five thousand four hundred.
And if I could just ask, why is it fifty-fifty and not a normal break with the school of sixty, forty or?
The school, the school agreed to, um, move ahead with this as a fifty-fifty deal because they felt while they have fewer buildings, um, indeed, they did feel that the, their buildings are larger and are more likely to require some additional time than we would need for our buildings, with several of our buildings being new or fairly new. They felt that there is likelihood that, um, fifty percent of the time would be absorbed by the school.
So they have more work, they are paying less money?
No, they, they, they will be equally sharing in the amount of work that will be.
But our buildings is, uh, this one, police station and, uh, senior center, brand new. What, what kind of work we may be expecting?
DPW and the fire department, we expect some work will be done at the fire department as well.
Those are all smaller buildings compared to the schools, right?
Yep, so-
All three.
But what it doesn't do is it still, for each building, whether it's new or, or older, it doesn't eliminate the work that's going to be involved in terms of doing that preventive maintenance plan, oversight of work that's being done. So I, I thought the school was being very fair with us to look to do it at a fifty-fifty share cost.
So our portion of forty-eight thousand in reality is, is more than that, because we're going to pay the benefits. We don't split that.
The, the benefits get charged to the school through the operating budget annually.
So they'll get fifty percent of the benefits also? That will add probably another nine, ten thousand dollars to this, maybe? I mean, to tell, to really say what we're spending, uh, you know, it's going to be over a hundred, I'm sure, for this person.
When you add benefits, it will be over a hundred, yes.
I, you know, I just, I, I, I'm, I'm, I was far getting something, but I think we're, I think maybe if we started off smaller and just, I can't imagine this guy being busy. Five days a week, forty hours a week. Once he gets the contracts in place, once he, you know, after that first six months of getting used to everything, he's a man, he's not managing any of the staff at the school. He doesn't have any control over them.
Yeah.
So he has a couple janitors that empty baskets and sweep floors that do a great job. But besides that, I can't imagine this guy be that busy with, with a forty-hour week. I, maybe I'm wrong, but.
Not only that, you know, I, I do think, you know, we do have a brand-new buildings. Do we really need a, a full-time person and a full-time, uh, bachelor's degree in civil engineering to do this job? As well as, uh, he's not going to physically do anything. So again, you know, we are going to outsource each and every work to outside vendors. He is just a manager, he goes around, walks around and does the some, uh, checking on the things, keeping it. Basically, he's doing a secretarial work. He's not an engineer, we don't need an engineer. I mean, if he, if he hire a handyman, this guy handyman can go there and he can physically do a work. If there is something in the, on the other day, you know, some, some of the hostess, whether we, they can, if the door is broken, can he fix the director can fix it? No, we have to call the outside guy. So while you are paying this big money.
Raj, in, in the job description, it does say that this person would be responsible for doing repairs and such to the townside buildings. Um, the, there, there is not a need to do that as much on the school side because they have their, their head custodian who's able to do that. But on the town side, we do not have that capacity. And that capacity is built into the job description as, as it's, you see inside your packet.
No, I, I did read the job descriptions a few times. So, you know, do we really need a bachelor's degree in engineering to do this job? As well as, at this time, you know, I feel like this is a lot and lots of money for these positions compared to DPW director. So I, I think, you know, for me, it's, it's too much.
Mr. Chairman? Um, I wanted to point out that in your packet, you'll see that there's a, a letter from the school superintendent in support of the position as it's been established. Um, could I read it to the record? So this is from Superintendent Shopper and she's saying, um, that my purpose in writing to you is to offer my support for the creation of the position of a shared facilities manager who would work with both the town and the schools to maintain and improve the condition of our facilities. This position would benefit our schools by bringing specialized knowledge and skills to the efforts in maintaining, excuse me, maintenance planning, capital planning, future repairs and construction project management. We anticipate that the facilities manager would play a key role in our organizational structure, bringing high level of expertise and oversight to our facilities management approach. Our current school facilities are aging and require ongoing maintenance and improvement in order to remain viable as learning environments. A dedicated professional who can help us to make judicious use of our maintenance funds and approach would be a welcome addition to our management team. For these reasons, I wish to offer my endorsement of this position and request your support of its creation. And tonight we also have with us, um, members from the library board and Anishaw, the library director, who I believe would like an opportunity to speak to this as well.
Well.
Hello. Janice, I have a question, the library?
Anishaw, library director.
If you want to speak, go ahead.
Of course, I, okay.
So I have a letter here from Kate Halpin, who is the board of trustees chair, and Mary Ellen Cox, who is the vice chair. Since we are unable to attend your meeting, we have asked Anashaw to present this letter to you. As library trustees, we are very interested in the position of facilities manager. Having served as trustees for several years, we are very aware of the library building concerns and the amount of time our director spends in this area. Often, we need the expertise of someone with more knowledge and whose focus would be on the best practices in solving the problems. Our town needs to care for our town hall, police station, senior center, and our excellent library so that they will last for generations to come. At the library, we have a very part-time custodian who maintains the building and goes far beyond his duties. Our need is someone who could step in for the major issues. We respectfully request that you consider establishing a position that will provide oversight to major building issues. This position will cost more, but we firmly believe that in the long run, it will be economically sound. Thank you for all that you do and for listening to our concerns." And then I have something I want to say, too. The library is an aging building. Some of it is 100 years old, over 100 years old, and then some of it is newer. The addition was done in 99. But there are a lot of preventive maintenance projects that need to be kept up with in order to maintain the building. A facilities manager can help prioritize and set a schedule for these projects. Currently, I am forced to rely on the vendor's recommendation, which may not always be the right course of action. I spend a lot of my time learning about boilers and fan coil units and it would be really helpful to have a facilities manager who understands the building and all its complex moving parts, who could help make recommendations based on our actual needs. And just this week, I had a high pressure on my circulating pumps for the boiler and I had to make a service call to find out that we had a faulty dial. I don't know about dials, but a knowledgeable facilities manager would have helped me to determine if this warranted an emergency service call. I understand the town is now green community certified and will have access to grants and an energy efficiency program. There are many projects that could be done at the library to increase our energy efficiency and this person would be a great person to oversee those projects. I would also like to see townwide contracts for services such as HVAC and elevators, which would result in cost savings instead of each department creating their own contract. It is my hopes that a facilities manager would be able to assist in preserving the town's investment in these buildings. Thank you.
And I've been on the board for just three years, but it's been such an eye-opening experience to see all the effort and time and angst that goes into just keeping the building together. And I think one of the unseen benefits of having a facilities manager would be that the director would be freed up to do the library work. I mean, she has so many things on her plate right now and all the problems with the boiler and the woodpecker destroying the side of the building and the windows leaking and the roof leaking and there's so many issues. I think what the library is a particular problem because it has all these situations going on. And you have to have so many levels of expertise in order to figure out what we should be doing, what we should be spending, what's the best course going forward. A lot of times, it feels like a juggling act where we don't have quite enough information to make the best decision. And ideally, it would be wonderful to have somebody who has a bird's-eye view of what's happening in the town and look at what needs to happen when and maybe coordinate some of the programs, some of the contracts, so that we can get some of these things done and not always be relying on the individual groups trying to work them out. So it's, we do a lot with what we have, but a lot of times, it's like running, it's like trying to run a house and get all these things done yourself without having any help. So I think that's one of the benefits would be that she would free her up to do some of the things that she really needs to be doing on the library side and not worry so much about the building and keeping it together.
I appreciate your concerns, but I mean, my concern is the cost. You know, the next time we do a contract, it's a 3% raise or 2% raise. Before we know it, this gentleman is going to be, I mean, did we possibly look into maybe hiring a consultant to come in, tell us what we need? Putting library, putting elevator contracts together really should have been done by us. We shouldn't need to pay someone $85,000 to say, "It's a smart thing if you guys all have one elevator company coming in." I mean, that's, it just seems like, once he gets the major work done, I mean, all of these things you talked about, he can tell you we need all of them, but then we have to come up with hundreds of thousands of dollars to fix everything.
Right. Well, so the things that I have to do every year are repair the EPIS on my building. So part of my new building is made out of fancy styrofoam, that's what I call it. I don't know what it really is, but it's very easy for woodpeckers to drill holes in it. We found that out this year, that was a really fun time. But every year, I do an exterior walkthrough of the building to see where are there cracks in this EPIS because if there are cracks in the EPIS that I don't get fixed, then the rain gets in and it destroys the building. So every year, I go out and I have $9,900 to do this and I spend whatever I can fixing the biggest cracks in the building and it's never enough. And then I have to recaulk the seams on the EPIS every five years and that's expensive as well. So there's just a lot of things and I don't have a good eye for when this work needs to be done. Can I go another year or do I really have to do it now? And if I rely on the caulking guy, he's going to tell me, "You should do it right now. You got to do it right now." And I don't know that that's always the right thing to do, but I have a degree in library science.
I think, you know, Roger's point about the new buildings, though, is a good point, but the way we're going to keep them new is to maintain them. That's the only way we're going to do it. I don't care if it's the police station, this building here, if we don't maintain them, everybody always complaining, "Oh, we don't maintain our buildings." Well, we do maintain our buildings, but we have to do them correctly. I just don't know if the hours, I mean, because if you want to build, get somebody qualified if it was a part-time job, is that what you're worried about?
In speaking with Anna and I met with Beth Shopper last week and talked about, you know, is there a way to reduce this job and still have it be effective? And Beth Shopper was very concerned that a part-time position simply would not be enough. I mean, she feels very strongly that they will actively use their 50% of the time of this individual. So that means that all the other town buildings, that individual would have only 20 hours a week for those other town buildings to do what needs to be done. And, you know, there will be, you know, seasonal fluctuations, there will be, you know, monthly fluctuations. But I, you know, I think from the conversation, I think we all felt pretty strongly that there would be enough work to keep this individual busy, you know, for the 40 hours per week, that we wouldn't attract, if we attempted to do it for less hours, we were concerned that we would be basically setting up this program, this individual, for failure because he wouldn't have enough time, he or she would not have enough time to do the job properly.
At this time, who is doing this work in the school? How this works?
Roger Pompbran, the business manager, is attempting as best he can to fulfill this role within the school system. One of the concerns that Superintendent Shopper has is that when Roger leaves, when he retires, that, you know, it's very uncommon to have a business manager have the degree of building knowledge the way that Roger does and that when he leaves, they will lose that function, that ability on the school side. And she's very concerned about that.
They could hire someone with that kind of qualifications, right?
They're looking to hire that person with qualifications by sharing the position with the town.
No, I'm not asking that. The person who we're taking care of now, he has the knowledge of the buildings, he's taking care of it. When he retires or when he leaves, when we advertise for that same positions, we could look for the same kind of a person in the school. So I'm just saying.
And Raj, my answer to that is that Beth feels that she, it's very uncommon to have a business manager that has that unique side skill set that Roger has. She, you know, it's, when you hire a business manager, the primary function of the job is the administration of all the school finances and contracts, et cetera. It's very unusual to find somebody who also has the knowledge of buildings the way that Roger does. She's concerned that it would be almost impossible to replace Roger with the skill sets that he has.
You know, my view is, and I totally agree, we do need to have maintained our buildings. But at the same time, after looking at this price tag, this is way too much for this person.
On the salaries that you have up there for compensation, do they all have engineering degrees, too? If we didn't ask for that, could that salary be lower?
The town that does not is Boylston and there's a copy of the Boylston job description in your packet. You'll see that for Boylston, it's basically just a head custodian position, does not have the same requirements, nor does have the same scope of responsibilities and services. So Boylston is the unique.
So having the engineer degree would get us?
Brings it up to the higher level.
And to what, what would, I'm trying to understand because this is like nothing that I'm really familiar with. What does that degree do, what does that degree bring to the town for the benefit to the town? Are there other things that that person would be doing that we would have to go outside to hire someone to do?
Fair question. So if you look at the job description?
I see the West Boylston one, but I don't. Yes, yeah, West Boylston. And even said that there was a Boylston one.
There should be the Boylston job description attached in there. It's at the very back.
At the end, last two pages.
So within the proposed job description for our position, we're asking that the person have a bachelor's degree in engineering or construction management or a related field and this individual would have to have a strong working knowledge in building and ground maintenance, construction of new facilities, as well as current codes and statutes regarding physical, excuse me, physical municipal facilities, knowledge of building systems and equipment, including but not limited to roofs, structural, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, telecom, and project estimating. The job description does allow for a minimum of three years of experience in facilities management or construction supervisory role, or any equivalent combination of education, training, or experience that would provide the skill set necessary to do the work. So when we're looking for a person of that caliber, we're looking at someone who has the knowledge and the experience of working with buildings so that they can do that analysis of each building to understand, you know, what is the current capacity of the various different mechanical systems within the building? You know, what are the issues, prioritization of issues, what are appropriate plans that need to be put forward to address those specific issues? Without someone with that degree of either combination of education, training, and experience, you would not find that person with that degree of skill set necessary to do that level of work that we're looking for.
So back to, in regards to these comparisons up here, I mean, besides Boylston, all those other towns probably have 10 times the buildings we have?
No, actually, they don't.
Conked, Lexington, North Andover, they have, I can't imagine that they have two schools, or three schools.
They have numerous schools, but, I mean, when you're looking at, when you're looking at the larger communities such as, you know, Concord and Swambscut, they, you know, I do not, I did not include a column for the number of buildings associated here, but these are communities within the area that did respond to our survey that have the shared facilities manager so that they're responsible for their town buildings and school buildings as well. The average, when you look at the range, and there is a range of wages, as you can see, the larger communities have the larger salaries, but the average for that is $85,000. And so what we're proposing is to put in $84,000 into the budget with the expectation that that would be on the high range, that the salary that we would actually pay for someone walking in the door for us would be less than that.
And what is the salary range that you're aiming for?
We're still doing that as part of the compensation study work.
I mean, I think I'd look at it different if this gentleman was going to supervise all the maintenance people in town and possibly say, "There's a down at the school today, I can send them over to the library to do some work." Or, "There's a down at the police station, I can send somebody over." I'd look at it a little differently, but this gentleman's going to walk in, after he does all of those surveys of all, you're going to give him a lot of stuff, but after he does all of those surveys, he's going to tell us that in order to fix the DPW, we need $100,000 to fix all the issues at the library. And I agree with Mr. Hadley, we have to maintain our buildings, but our issue as a board of selectmen over the years is, we bring to town meeting $50,000 to maintain a building, but sometimes it gets cut to hire a teacher or a DPW worker. So it's not that we, the board of selectmen over the years don't bring things to the town to fix these buildings, they just get voted out at town meeting or they get the priorities, we put the priority at the teacher or the DPW worker. So I think once he does all of that, looking at this building and seeing what it needs, is a couple light bulbs out or something, I don't foresee him coming back to this building to really do a lot, or the same with the police station, or once he evaluates the library and the school, I just think 40 hours a week.
And also, you know, do we really need an engineer to do this job? So Boylston, you know, they have associate degree or journeyman level. So those guys, you know, those guys can really work on some of the issues. So if the boiler is broke, they can, they can fix your woodpeckers, right? They can, and demands, they can fix your woodpeckers, they can chase the woodpeckers, you know?
Stand outside and wait.
Not the engineer, definitely.
Well, it's just, has there been any talk with the school of letting this gentleman maybe get rid of the head janitor? I don't know, lay him off, we don't need him anymore, whatever the case, I don't know. But some savings and then say, "You're going to be the manager of those guys now."
No, there has been no discussion to that level.
But he won't be cleaning, right?
Supervision. Can they do it? Yes, they could do it. It's a contract, but you can still put a manager on these, someone's managing these people now at the school, not just, someone's managing the head janitor, there's got to be some.
Roger Pompbran is managing the group.
Okay. So, but this is not going to be under eye, this gentleman now?
This person, whoever would take this job, if established, would be responsible for working with Roger and would be providing oversight on an as-needed basis of Roger's staff, depending on what was going on at the time, whether it was a repair project, a maintenance project, et cetera. But this person, he or she, would not be directly supervising school custodial staff. He would be working with school administration to supervise on an as-needed basis.
Along with that, do you know when he will be, is retiring or leaving?
I do not know for certain, no.
Well, we're saying, Roger, that position manages that. It doesn't matter who's in it. That position manages the maintenance department.
I understand the need for the town. I think if we could maybe tweak it a little, see what other things we might be able to work with. With this person, like we have somebody who takes care of this person, this person, this building, the library, police station, and then soon-to-be senior center. Would this person, could they take the supervision of the town buildings of the people and would that save us any money? That take care of those existing buildings now? So like would the janitors of all our other buildings report to this one person? And could we save some because could we combine any of those in the future? I'm trying to think of other ways.
I don't know exactly, but I think total, total janitors in all four of these buildings, how many hours does it add up to? It's each building, how many hours is your janitor?
He has 15 hours and it's not enough.
I know, 15 hours.
This is 12.
12, so I mean, putting, it's not like there's a lot there.
And what's senior center?
I don't think it would change the FTEs in terms of the number of custodial hours that we would need to have done.
Also, you know, I do think, you know, this qualification, experience, all are like our DPW director. Can he take care, now he's taking care of DPW building, right? So do you think he may be willing to take over this role also?
No. We're looking for a totally different level of skill sets, Raj, than what our DPW director.
And really, does he have the time?
Would not have the time.
I guess my question is, what? If we hire him and in a year, we find out that he doesn't have enough work, what's the worst case that could happen? It's eliminate the job. the worst case that could happen? Is eliminate the job, or downgrade the job?
Downgrade the job.
Or we start, or we start lower and, and upgrade the job instead of telling a guy that, "We're going to test you out for you. Quit your job. We're going to give you this one, but we don't know if this is going to work out."
I think, I think it's better to start the lower, lower, and then if we really need it, then we can go higher.
Well, we definitely, we definitely need.
We do need, but I'm not, do we, do we need it? Do we need at this time? Again, you know, thinking of our new buildings, how much we need, that's, that's the thing, you know, it's a full-time, forty hours, bachelor's degree in engineering, or business management. The salary wise, you know?
You know, every building's going to need something all the time. They always, everything needs something, so, we have to think if it's, how you guys want to proceed, if you want to hire somebody full-time or part-time, or you don't want to dedicate that much money to, to begin with.
Anita, were you thinking one, one-year, two-year kind of contract? Have we gotten that far?
I think we would have to do a contract.
Why can't we just make an employee?
That's what I'm asking.
We, we could, we could try to do it as an at-will, and then I think we would find ourselves probably looking to establish that somebody coming in would have an expectation of a contract. But, more importantly though, this would be part of the wage schedule, so it could be just an at-will employee. But, I think we might find ourselves in a situation where if we can't attract somebody without a contract, we would want to give consideration to establishing a contract for the position.
Are the other towns contracts or employees?
They were a combination.
Combination, okay.
And the other thing, we, I'm sure we thought of it, can we have like a, hire somebody as a project manager to come in, like, somebody, an outsider who wants to come in and do all the stuff, and then tell us what needs to be done? Because he's not going to do anything anyhow. He's not going to do any of the actual work. Am I correct?
He would be doing some of the small repairs and, and work, yes, he would. I mean, you know, you would, you would ask before, would he be able to fix the door handle? Would he be able to do this? Would he be able to do that? Yes, this person would be having a Massachusetts construction license, so they would have the ability to do those small repairs for us, on the town side.
So, I guess I'm asking, is it better off to have somebody, like a project manager that we don't own, that we just hire, you know, on a yearly basis to come in and tell us all these things wrong in the building, than have somebody individually come in and do all the repairs herself? Do you think that would be cheaper, or?
Consultant.
Consultant, yeah.
Consultant, maybe once in three months. We don't need every single day for.
I think if you're looking for this, for an outsourced consultant to set up prevent and maintenance plans, to help develop annual capital plans, et cetera, that type of thing, we could certainly take some time and see if we could get some, some proposals for that pricing. We have not done that. We've been looking at this as being, you know, a, a full-time position, and mostly at the behest of the schools, because the schools feel very strongly that they're going to need their full fifty percent of this individual's time.
I guess, I guess that, that confused me. So, they only, they only needed to take what the current person does, take that job away from him, whoever that person may be. That's why they say they need, they need a person to, because he's going to do the.
It's not just to relieve, it's not just to relieve the responsibilities off of the business manager. They also feel that there's, you know, there are things that perhaps have not been done as appropriately as they could have been in the past. I mean, you know, compliance with procurement laws can be a difficult thing, and unless you're, it's some, you know, it's something that you do on a regular basis, you know, there have been instances in the past where we have not been fully compliant with procurement laws. There have been instances in the past, specifically on the school side, where, you know, decisions were made that resulted in projects going very wrong, or requiring to be redone, potential safety issues, so, you know, I think they're very concerned that it's, it's going to bring them a higher level of control and oversight than currently is able to happen.
If we're going to hire a management company, could you have an RFP?
Yes, we would.
So, how long are you looking, if you want something like?
Just to find out, will they come back, how long?
An RFP process would take like six to eight weeks. We would not have it done in time for town meeting.
Are there any current contracts that we have in place that when we have this facility manager, we're going to, we're not going to need anymore? Someone that comes in and looks at the boilers every month, and we pay him a contract? Because now this gentleman's supposed to be our boiler guy.
The current contracts we have, such as elevator inspection, HVAC maintenance, those are specialty areas. So, I would not expect this facilities management person to have those specialty skills.
No, just, I mean, one thing, the emergency call. So, you may call this facilities guy and say, "You got to call an emergency contractor, because I'm not a boiler repair man." I mean, I don't think he's going to be, really.
She's going to call him and say, "I have no heat."
And he's going to say, "I'll have to call an emergency call in to get your heat."
Well, occasionally, there are issues with the boiler, like this week, we had a faulty dial, so it was reading high pressure. There wasn't actually high pressure in my system. So.
So, if you, you're in your mind, you're going to call this gentleman, person, it doesn't have to be a gentleman, thank you, person, and then he would have the knowledge to come look and then give you the guidance of what to do.
Right, so he would let me know, "Do I need to call for an emergency repair, or is this a faulty dial?"
I can't, I can't imagine any person doing, making that call unless he was a heating expert.
Yeah.
There's no way in the world, a person, a lead person, or even engineer is going to say, "This dial is defective," if he's not a heating person.
No, I mean, Anita already said it. She said in regards to HVAC, we're going to still keep our contracts in place. Of course, because we're going to need experts for all of these.
Of course, because this is not going to replace, you know, my, my HVAC contract. But, you know, in terms of the dial, like, now my custodian knows how to do it, and he can show me how to do it, because the guy who came out on the emergency service call showed him how to do it. So, it's not something that's a, a very complex skill.
So, I'm, yeah, so I'm thinking for the, for the eighty-five thousand, if we were to hire a consultant that looked at all our buildings and told us what we needed, and then beef up some of these contracts, merge one guy to check all our elevators in town, that'll probably be a savings. And, you know, you said you already have a contract for your furnace and your boiler.
Yep.
We already have contracts for the air conditioning. Maybe we could beef all that stuff up and even get better contracts and still be well below, and again, the ninety-three thousand, the ninety-three thousand is more like probably a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and ten. Out of, out of the towns, out of the towns' pocket.
I would love to have somebody who, to help me maintain the library building. In looking at the Boylston job description that was in your packet, I, I think that would be a, a waste of money, as far as I'm concerned, because I've got a great custodian who does really good work at the library, and I've learned a ton about boiler repairs, and I, I don't see that Boylston job description really helping me with my issues at the library. So, I, I think it's really important to have the qualifications listed in the, the job description that Anita drafted, to make sure that we get the person that I need to help at the library.
Ideally, to figure out when the boilers need replacing, because the boilers keep failing, and the long-term fix for that is huge, expense-wise, and also with the roof and the windows that are leaking. So, all of these things that are falling apart, trying to figure out how we pay for that, when should we fix it? Is there a way to do it on a town-wide basis that would be cheaper? I know libraries is particularly difficult in that arena, and I don't know how it can work town-wide, but it definitely seems like there's a piece missing in trying to figure out how to get these things done without spending too much money and how to prioritize them.
And I agree with you, but with this facilities person, we're still need to, going to fix, we're still need to fix the roof, or whatever is leaking. In a couple of years, we're still going to need boilers.
Yep.
It's not, this is not going to change that. I mean, it's just going to, he's going to tell us that we need it.
We are still going to call the boiler guy.
I, I don't, I don't.
Exactly, yeah, it's more the expertise of looking at the building as a whole and trying to figure out what should we be doing next. I, I realize he's not going to be able to do the actual repair work, but I feel like we're missing that layer of expertise in the middle somewhere.
I would say let's, I mean.
We need to look for some other alternate.
An RFP, an RFP, just to give us an idea of someone, I mean, it would have to be, it would have to be written up by the town administrator to answer all of our questions. An RFP to come in and give, consult, I don't, I don't know exactly right now, thinking about it, what it would need, but just to see what the price would come back at, I mean.
Yeah, maybe once in six months, you know, audit.
No, I think we ought to, the town to look at that option before we, you know, commit a hundred thousand dollars to the manager. We do need someone, we need, we definitely have issues, we need to take care of, but might be a better way of doing it. Have we agreed on that?
Yeah, yeah, I, I do agree in.
Okay. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
All right. Crosswalk stanchions in Goodale and Crescent Street.
So, we, Butch Jackson, DPW director, has looked at the various different stanchion styles that are available, and he's found one that is very sturdy, well-priced. We're more just looking to try to get clarification in terms of how many stanchions you want in the area. So, we were looking, there was the one crosswalk at the, on Goodale, at the intersection there by Crescent Street, at the intersection. Did you want them on every other crosswalk along Crescent, heading up to the high school, or just at that main crosswalk that goes between the parks on the two sides?
What exactly are these like?
The Crescent, for the crosswalk, so they hit, you know, how things stand up, so people, people in the middle, they don't, they slow down, it's like a.
To be placed in the road itself in the middle, so the cars can go by in either direction. It's a vertical stand on a rubber base, and it just gives people advance warning that there's a crosswalk.
Okay, so, who's going to take them in, take them out?
They would stay in place. They typically stay in place.
They're going to be fastened, or?
No, they're typically loose, so that if they do accidentally get hit, they just.
Because years ago, the Parks Commission did buy those for around the school, and I think about a month, they were all gone.
This was a request, I think Pat had brought this up at the last meeting.
I, I, we thought it was a great idea, and that's exactly what we did. We, we put them out, we put the, and they, they lasted about a month, and they were all gone. So, I, I don't know who, someone's going to have to, I don't think they're just going to sit out there, snowy weather, they're going to be taken in for the winter, I don't, I don't know.
I think, you know, this, this one last meeting, Pat brought it up.
I think it's a good idea.
So, maybe a blinking lights, you know?
A lot more expensive. This is a very low-cost option. How much?
Yeah, these are like fifty bucks a piece.
Yeah, and that's, and we spent, we spent at least that, that was years ago, and they didn't last long, because we wanted them by the parks.
So, if you had one in each crosswalk, or do you need more than?
Well, that's what he wanted clarification on. So, you know, I, I think people do have concern about that crosswalk that goes across Goodale, just before the intersection itself. But then there's also that major crosswalk that goes from Field One and Two over to the softball field, and then there's the other crosswalk a little further down, closer to the elementary school. Did you want one at each of those locations?
These are now, these are now roads. Now, this is going to be left in the middle of that road, day and night.
Yep.
Never moved.
Right, it's on the, it just sits on the yellow line.
Is there another option that would be costly?
I'm not sure if he checked with the chief.
I would reach out to the chief. I mean, this is, I just can't imagine, it's not going to be lit at night. This is going to be something sitting in the middle of the road.
They're reflective, right.
Yeah, reflective, but still, I mean, I don't see a lot that gets just sit out there.
A lot of towns do have them.
I, I don't, I mean, I just think of parks, I drive by and things like that. I don't see any.
We were talking a couple, two or all, something like that.
That's exactly what the Parks Commission said when we purchased them. It's only a couple hundred dollars, and they weren't fifty dollars each, they were back then, so I can imagine they're a little more expensive, but.
Would it be something that if there is like a game going on, that somebody from the Parks Department or somebody that has the game would put it out, even for that game, and then like Chris said, take them, take it in?
They're, they're certainly portable. That could be an option.
However, how heavy, you know, just, I'm trying to come up with another solution, because I agree we should have something there, and I understand, Chris, what you were saying, they didn't last.
All we need is, you know, one car to run now, that's it, done. Only one car to run now.
Can we, I, I would ask that we reach out to the chief and to have us, have him give us some input on what he thinks might be the best thing. Obviously, lights would be the best thing, but that would be a lot more than a hundred dollars in intersection, but.
So, let's, let's put this on the May second agenda. Butch Jackson's going to be here that night anyways to give you a DPW update, so we can talk about it more than, by then you'll have a chance to reach, to talk to the chief about it.
Reach out to some other towns. I, I think it's more like, as Bronson says, I think they're taking in and out for busy events, not just left there, because. I think if it's left out, if it's left out all the time, it just doesn't become as important. We see it there every day, every night, we drive by, it doesn't, you know.
You know, the road repair cones, once they put it in the prospect streets, all the cones are, all the cones are gone within a couple of days.
Well, we'll bring up the May second meeting. All right, opioid litigation, consider both to join the lawsuit.
So, you had asked that this be put on the agenda, and in your packet, there's a flyer that was provided by KP Law, but in my opinion, it doesn't provide a lot of information. Basically, the proposed opioid litigation, it's being pursued by various different municipalities across the state. It's litigation that's being brought against the manufacturers and the distributors of opioids based on theories of, of nuisance negligent cost to the community, et cetera. So, the litigation is an effort to try to recoup the costs, provide for future costs, and hold the manufacturers and the distributors accountable for the expense and the complications that each community is dealing with. According to Mark Rich, who is the, the key attorney from KP Law involved in this, this joint partnership of legal firms, the litigation is being handled on a contingency basis, meaning that there's no upfront cost to the town. The legal fees and expenses would be deducted from any recovery, whether through its settlement or a judgment. Legal fees that would be provided to that group of attorneys from the different firms would be thirty-five percent of the recovery and expenses capped at ten percent. The town, while there's no cost to us to do this, the town would be required to execute a legal services agreement in order to join the litigation, and the board, the board would just simply need to vote to join the opioid litigation and to authorize the chairman to sign that agreement. The town would be required to provide some degree of documentation of past and future costs resulting from our efforts in dealing with opioid addiction issues here in town, and the team would help us, the legal team would help us in determining the documentation necessary. So, you know, at this point, it's, it's impossible to try to determine what amount of recovery might be outcome of this litigation, and there's really no distribution formula established yet in terms of how any settlement or judgment would be shared amongst communities. I did check with the two chiefs to determine, you know, what type of cost do we have as a community, and how difficult would it be to document those costs? And Fire Chief Walsh said, said that basically, the Narcan that we use as a community is on the ambulances. We, we do not have Narcan within our cruisers. So, the expense would be of the Narcan that is used, it would be for a bag valve mask, small amount, extra paramedic cost of a hundred and fifteen dollars. So, you know, there would certainly be the ability to track those cases, those incidents, those responses, to determine what those costs are. So, that would be, you know, tracking that on the fire side would be fairly easy. And Chief Minnick was saying that there would not be as much involved on the police side, but, you know, he, there would certainly be the potential for looking at overtime costs or other things that might be related to certain calls. So, we would have the ability to provide the documentation if we moved ahead with this. It sounds as though West Boylston, as compared to some other communities, wouldn't be looking at that large of expense or nuisance that we have as a community as compared to larger cities.
Well, I mean, I, I think we should, we should definitely do it. I mean, there's no question that, the only thing we do know is that the lawyers are going to take forty-five percent of any money we take. No, forty-five, plus they'll cap their expenses at another ten.
At ten percent.
So, that was, that's awfully nice of them. We can thank them, KP Law and all, all the cities and towns that they represent. That's nice that they're giving, taking forty-five percent. But, I mean, I think when we, when we put that cost together, if the, if the ambulance goes out to a call, you know, anywhere in town, Walmart, and it's, it's drug-related, I think the cost isn't just the opioid, I mean, the Narcan he might use, it's the ambulance call that probably isn't going to get paid. You know, it goes, you know, I mean, it's the cost of the police officers working on You know, it goes, you know, I mean, it's the cost of the police officers working on cases.
Correct.
Drug-related. I mean, I don't think it's just the simple cost of how many Band-Aids we, we use.
We don't know exactly what would be allowed in terms of documentation, and that's why Mark Rich is saying that the team that's put together would provide that, that assistance and what documentation could be pulled together, what costs could be assigned for each community. They don't know it yet. But once the, you know, if we were to join, and once that's all put together, they would work with us to do that.
I mean, because even, even the biggest cities, if we're just cost, the cost of materials, it's not gonna be, I think it's all the cost. The police officers going to calls because of the opioid, which is huge. I mean, I, I think we should, I don't think there's a, there's no lose here. I mean, that information we should, we should have anyway. So, I mean, I don't think that's something we're asking the chiefs to, to do. That's, that's good information to have for the town.
No, but we need to provide all the informations to the, somebody has to collect all the informations, either the fire or the police.
Both.
And I don't know what other information they need. So we'll be providing, collecting, somebody will be working, somebody will be collecting the data, and then they give all the datas to the lawyers. So there is a lot of substantial amount of work. Our town side also.
Well, I think we should have that information anyhow.
Yeah, the only, yeah, I, I, the only thing I disagree about that, that information, some of that information the police chief should have when he makes arrests, and they're drug-related.
It should be in all the call reports.
Right, that's, that's information that, that I don't think we're gonna be, he's gonna be, he's gonna be spending hours and hours on. I, I don't think so, but I, I, the ambulance calls too, I'm sure he knows, you know, the chiefs come here two, three times. He knows every ambulance, why it goes out.
Part of the billing.
Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna say what the call was, so I can't see a downside. I mean, I, I think we should ask KP Law, though, if they'd reduce their fee a little bit more to help us out. I'd make a motion that we join these, this, what's it called exactly?
National Opioid Litigation.
So moved.
And to authorize the chair to sign the agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right, Tibnan Drive, land lease, RFP.
So again.
I wanna know how many is that's been on the agenda.
I know.
How many is and how many times?
It'd be one of this town.
Twenty.
So this is basically the prior RFP that was used before, updating it for dates and times. The, the dates that are in this draft assume that proposals would be due later this summer, which allows us to meet that 90-day window in which we can hold the proposals pending a town meeting vote in October. So the, the feedback that I need from the board is, are you okay with retaining the same structure, which includes the evaluation criteria for, you know, evaluating the different proposals that we hopefully would be lucky enough to receive in this process? So it's really just, you know, are you still okay with the minimum qualifications? And are you still okay with the evaluation criteria?
So very basic, we're just looking for anybody to lease this piece of land. I mean, that's fine with me. Let's do it again.
Any motion?
Motion that we accept the Tibnan Drive lease.
No, send me RFP for Tibnan Drive, yep.
Second.
Second.
Yep.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Review on charge of capital investment board?
Yeah, this is something that Pat had asked to be put on, and I'm not sure why.
Let's put on, let's do it.
Take a second.
Okay.
This is also something from Pat that I think we need to talk about. It's sending a letter from Senator Chandler, which was stepping down of Senate, President requested, pushed to it, thank you donation for the town's new senior senator project. It's not gonna hurt.
Oh, let's ask for 10 million, though. Why are we only going for three? Let's say.
Add on the police station too.
All right, so.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah, and to authorize John to sign.
So I'll put the motion that we accept the letter sent to Senator Harriet Chandler and that Mr. Hadley Chairman can assign it requesting a donation to the senior senator.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. We should just, maybe we should reach out to Representative O'Day and tell him to maybe work, work on the House side to try to get this passed.
He was, he was actually copied on the email that Pat sent.
Yeah.
Recognize the acceptance of the following donations for the BNC and Committee and its approved expenditures for the funds for general purposes, 265 Gordon &amp; Larry, 265 Beverly Goodell, 265 Suzumiola's, 265 North End Motors, 265 Fay Brothers, 265 O'Connell Restaurant, 265 AA Beardsley, 265 Premier Optical, 265 Neil KC, 265 Bill's Taxi, 265 Webster First, and 293 from Leela Beardsley.
Do we have a taxi in town? Do we have a taxi in town? A Bill's Taxi? I don't, I don't know where it yet.
Oh, okay. All right, so we need a motion to accept?
Motion.
Oh, we just recognize him.
Recognize the acceptance and to approve the expenditure of the funds for general purposes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All business, review and discuss open meeting law complaint with John. You went here before John. Brief statement at the open meeting.
Okay.
So the open meeting law complaint that we received, basically, as, as John mentioned earlier, under public comment, the concern is that when he came before the board at the meeting in January, that during public comment, he, he made various statements about concerns he has with some, some of the organizational and operational things that are happening with the PEG Board, but he did include some questions within his, his statements. And when he started asking the questions, you know, he, he felt he was told that he couldn't ask questions and that he, he felt that he needed to know whether or not there, that he had misheard or that, you know, that the board was perhaps not following through with policy. So we did discuss this briefly at your last meeting, you may recall, and we agreed we'd bring it back again tonight. The, the YouTube video was there for you to take a look at so that you could see for yourselves in terms of exactly what happened. And so that tonight, the expectation is that the board would discuss what happened and determine if you feel that there was any misunderstanding or misspeaking on behalf of how that was handled in response to Mr. Schlechtie.
I, I mean, I, I can, I, I have no problem with anybody coming to the public comments to ask questions. I mean, questions in regards to, I, I just, I kind of stop the question and answers, because this public comment we had in place for if we thought something that was brought up at public comment should be talked about at another meeting, it should be put on the agenda, not going back and forth answering questions. That was my understanding. So, I mean, it was me that, that, that said the question. Asking questions, that's, that's allowed. He could have sit here and asked questions to the board, and it could have been noted, because it's a public comment. It's not, it's not a discussion. I mean, I guess it could be called discussion with board, I think, if it was different. So that was my understanding. If we need to fix it somehow, I mean, that's.
That's, that's what I'm thinking is, you know, it reads, "Public to address their concerns and questions regarding town operations and the programs to the board." So do we need to change that question spot?
No, I think, I think it says exactly what it's, what it's, he's, "Questions regarding town operations and programs." That's questions, and then we can decide if it's something that raises to an agenda item in the future, so we can research it.
Right, and actually, if, if you saw the, the YouTube video, when Mr. Schlechtie did start asking the questions, actually, both Chris and John made the comment that this isn't a Q and A session, but you did allow Mr. Schlechtie to continue on to put his questions to the record. So his, his question, you know, he did continue to list his questions for the board's information and for potential bringing back for discussion at a future meeting. So at least in my viewing of the, of the meeting on YouTube, it appears that you did follow the dictates of your policy that's printed on each of the sets of minutes, because you did allow him to continue and ask the questions. You just didn't follow through with Q and A during that public comment period.
That, that's, that's my understanding correct.
Do you think, you know, we could change the wordings so that, you know, nobody can ask the board questions to get an answer? I don't know how you word it, but this sometimes, you know. Questions means, you know, I, can I ask a question? Somebody could interpret, can I ask a question? So I have, I have a question. Can I ask you? That's, that's the way some, someone is interpreting.
Questions regarding town operations, yep.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that the, that the, the language of this, you know, intent needs to be changed. I think, though, in the future, if we have someone who, you know, starts to pose questions to the board during the public comment, maybe the chair could, you know, make a statement that, "We'll accept your questions. We're not going to answer them this evening, but we'll accept your questions, and we'll decide when we want to bring, if and when we want to bring these back forward for discussion at a future board meeting."
The next sentence kind of answers the question, the concern about questions. I mean, the, the board shall not be discussed in detail nor act upon the board at this meeting. So, yeah, you can ask questions, but we're not gonna sit here. I mean, if, if, if you feel it needs to be reverted, but questions regarding town operations, so we could just say concerns about town operations? No, questions. I have a question in regards to, you know, the DPW, how they're plowing the streets, or the, you know, the parks, how they're. That's, I have no problem if we want to change it, or if it's, I think it's fine the way it is.
John?
I think the policy statement that you have now for public comment is fine. My objection was that when I asked, like, the first question, and my questions were all yes or no, that I was immediately, sorry, this is public comment, there's no questions. And so I did proceed after saying, yes, I understand the public comment policy says you have an opportunity to ask questions, so I'll present the questions I was gonna ask. I did not focus on criticism of any individual. I just felt from the very beginning to start saying, hey, there's no questions. And that's how I interpreted it. If it was, there's no questions and answers, then that's fine. But I was not saying, you know, we'll discuss that later. I was not say, told, hey, there's a warning, you're overstepping the line here. You're talking about this, that, or the other thing. So I think the policy is fine. I just felt that on this particular occasion, the message that was sent to me very soon was, hey, we don't want to hear it. We don't want to have a question that we have to give an answer to, and that's why you have a complaint.
If I could just, if I could just, do you want to?
I was just gonna say, do you understand how we clarified what we said tonight? What we just said, does that clarify anything for you?
I understand what the policy is. I don't see where you're saying that I violated the policy. In other words.
I, I think, you know, this is how, this is how I'm on that day, you know. I do remember that you did specifically asked members of the board, individual member of the board. So that time, so you can ask the questions, but I don't think so the board entertained an answer so that, you know, it'll be going like a question and answer session.
Yeah, no, there was no debate on any question that I asked.
Does that make sense?
Question.
Yep. Well, I just, the, the next sentence, "Except under urgent circumstances, any matter presented for consideration by the board shall not be discussed in detail nor acted upon by the board." Answering questions would, what I think would, would, that, that's the way I understood it. When I, when I, I was on, I was the chairman when we added the public comment.
Yep.
I, you know, so if, we want people to come and ask us comments. We will take the comments and the questions. If it's something that raises to an urgent, if it's something that we need to answer that day, we would answer it. But if not, we would decide.
I thought the existing policy was fine. If you want to change it so that it says you can make comments about concerns and you can ask questions, but we will not plan on answering any questions until a future date. But that's not how I understood the policy. I understood that if someone came up for public comment and say, can you tell me about this or that or the other thing, that you would say, well, look, here's the information.
There's, there's no way, there's, I understand that there's no way for us to have the answers to every question that comes in front of the board.
The questions I asked, if you read, were yes or no. I wanted you to be aware that certain things were happening. For example, I submitted something for public comment at a, at a recent meeting, and it was not addressed as public comment. I heard that it would be discussed at the next meeting. I did not see it discussed at the next meeting. We're talking about West Boston Public Access TV. They've made progress in a number of areas. I know some people don't watch it that regularly. Are you aware, or that I should at least get a response to say, hey, thank you for letting us know that there has been no readily visible live broadcast in scheduling for the last three months, three weeks or a month? Not saying, hey, we don't watch those, those high channels. When we had a system before.
I'm just curious. I mean, I, at the headboard meeting, we could talk. I'm just saying, this is in regards to the open meeting law violation.
Right, complaint.
Yeah.
Yes or no, did you tell me there are no, no questions and answers without having a reason for doing so? I would think that anybody coming to a board of selectmen meeting for public comment has a right to answer questions, and you can either give an answer, or you can say, we'll have to look into that and get back to you, or put it on a future agenda. And that's what I believe did not occur.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
So the, the specifics that, that Mr. Schlechtie was requesting within his complaint were three things. Acknowledgement of a violation to the town policy and/or the specifics or spirit of the open meeting law. Number two, review and confirmation of the specifics allowed during the public comment portion of the board of selectmen meetings. And three, an apology. So what, the purpose of bringing this back to the agenda tonight is for you to discuss those three complaints and determine whether or not, A, you feel there was a violation of the policy, B, do you feel that there's a need to, you know, change the specifics of what's allowed during the public comment, and C, do you feel that there's a need for an apology? So those are the three things you really need to, you know, make a determination on.
I mean, I, I was the chair that night, and if, if it was misunderstood, I'm very sorry. But that's the way I understood the, the situation, and I'm, I'm sorry if, if, if that was an issue. I mean, I, you know, and in regards to the other one, the first question was.
Right, the first one was acknowledgement of a violation to the town policy or the specifics or spirit of the open meeting law.
I mean, do we need to, if we need to answer that, I don't feel we violate the open meeting law.
You, you, you as a board need to determine whether you did, you felt you did or didn't, because we do need to respond to the AG's office.
So do you think, this is a question for you, so the public to address their concerns and questions. Is there a way we could change the language or?
Can I just?
We'll go with the second part of the question.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. We keep reading just to there, read the rest of the paragraph, and it kind of.
For me, you know.
If you, if you, if you stop right, you can just look at questions and say, it's public comment for questions.
That's where he is getting the point, you know, he's saying, you know, concern and questions. So you said the concern and questions, now you are not allowing me to ask, to post a question.
Yes, no, I am allowing it. Public concerns and questions regarding town operations and, and programs. And then the next sentence says, it will not be discussed by the board at this meeting. If, if fields needed, that it would go to another meeting. So I mean, I don't know.
Agree with you, yeah, totally agree with you. That's, this, this is what we did for other open, uh, public comments.
We've never had, we've never had questions and answers.
Not, not the questions, but when they come in, when they come in, they said that, we will take it up for the.
Well, let's go back to the first part, do we think we violated anything? From reading everything and from watching the video, I don't believe we did. I mean, is your. I mean, is your opinion?
When, when I reviewed the YouTube video again, I felt that you did not violate it, because you did allow him to ask his questions.
And the second, the second part?
The second question was something about the open meeting law, was it?
So, specifically, it asks for an acknowledgement of a violation to the town policy and/or the specifics or spirit of the open meeting law. So, you, you allowed the questions to happen per the existing language in your policy for, for public comment. So, in my opinion, but this has to be a decision of the board, you didn't violate the policy or the open meeting law in this. You, you gave him the opportunity to continue to ask his questions. He was told it wasn't a Q and A, but he was allowed to continue and, and ask his questions for the record.
I, again, I, I, I was the chairman that night. I think Mr. Hadley might have said something too, but, again, I'm sorry. I would love to sit down with John. I mean, these issues are around the pegboard. He has knowledge of the pegboard. He has knowledge of the cable access. He's worked on it for years. I would gladly sit down with John. I'd love to get input from him. And as he did say, and I appreciate that, we are making progress on the pegboard, and I appreciate the other members on the board. We spent a lot of time. We're doing things that we've never had on it. We've had, we have policies and procedures and things like that, so I have no problem. Again, I apologize for the, putting you through this and these issues, but I have no problem sitting down with you at any time in regards to the pegboard, if you'd like to.
And John is?
My, my response to that is, I have made a number of attempts to get information, and I have not had a response. I went through putting together information for the pegboard, and I sent it to them, and it did not go to any pegboard member. Luckily, I had also sent a carpet, copy to David Fennian. And what they said was, "Well, did we, did, do we get that message, or who's it going to?" Then they explained who it was going to, and they said, "Well, we'll have to look into that later." Didn't see it looked in later. When I presented at the March meeting, uh, information for public comment was not addressed, even though it was there, and I was told, I believe I interpreted, the end of the meeting, "Well, we'll discuss that email next meeting." Didn't occur. I realize there's problems in any situation. I attended the pegboard meeting yesterday, and I fully appreciate that Chris spends so much time on town activities. But when I sat there at the beginning of the meeting, I heard, "Okay, there is no secretary report, because the president's not here. We are going to vote on the election of a clerk, something that's been on there for months. Well, we'll, we'll pass by that." Then, uh, there was a discussion, as there have been at a number of pegboard meetings, about approving minutes. The meeting before, they approved the minutes, and then afterwards, they got into a debate about what were the actual amounts that we approved. And I, no, Chris very specifically said, "Well, we just approved it, and it's all been done unanimous." So, my concern is.
And then again.
Enough input, and I'm sorry if my asking questions causes problems, but I've made attempts to be helpful, and it's just.
Well, John, John, behalf of the board, I want to apologize, and I'm sure the rest of the board does too, if we offended you or something like that, but I, I don't think there's any violations that we did.
Okay.
I know that. But, um, the, the issues with the pegboard, something like that, certainly to attend the meetings, stuff like that, and talk about them, you're, you're even more than welcome. And Chris is, you know, sending olive branch to you if you want to help him, give any questions you have.
And all of this discussion was after I had requested an opportunity to talk to the board of selectmen in your executive session, and that was declined.
Well, we have certain rules that.
Yes, definitely, yeah.
All right, thank you, John. Appreciate it.
Do you need anything else on that, Nita?
So, I, I think I'd like a, a vote of the board in terms of how you're going to respond to this, so if we could do it by each point, if that's possible. So, does the board feel that there needs to be an acknowledgement of a violation of the town policy and/or specifics or spirit of the open meeting law?
I think we've already answered that, no.
No. Do we need a, do we want a?
We could take a vote, please, yeah.
A motion that we did not violate the open meeting as stated. Okay, as stated, thank you.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, do you feel the need to review or confirm the specifics of the language of the public comment policy within the minutes?
I don't, I don't believe so.
I think we've given a full explanation, you know.
I'll make a motion.
Half an hour, one hour.
I'll make a motion that we do not change the policy as present, as stated.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And do you feel that an apology is necessary?
Yeah.
And apologies were offered this evening.
If we need it, if we need to put it into writing, I have no problem. You type something up, and I'll gladly sign it.
Okay.
Do we need a motion to apologize to Mr. Schlie?
Yeah, do you need a motion on that, too?
Please.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All set? Let's see. The US spokesman, Pat, asked us to put this off till, maybe a second.
Okay.
And, uh, thank you, John. Next steps for cemetery land acquisition, we're going to put that off also?
Yes.
Request of the BOs or how they would like to be notified of events not announced at BOs meetings?
Right, we started to talk about this at the last meeting. Just, I, I'm seeking clarification from the board. For those times that we have events that are taking place that end up not being able to be announced at a selectman's meeting, how would you like to be notified of those events? Some of you have signed up for the, the website notification service on the various different aspects. Some of you have not. I'm just looking, you know, as, as a board, how would you like to be provided notice of those? Or are you com, are you happy with the process that you have now that you, as individuals, have chosen to sign up or not sign up for those notifications?
I'm not exactly sure. I know some issues, but the only thing I would say is if it's a, if it's a town event, the fire station, the police station, the board of health, something like that, I would think an email from the town administrator, since it's probably been spoken about at your meetings, you know about it. That's, that's all I'd ask. I mean, and then, the best cases, I would like it on our agenda. I think one of them that I might have, that I brought this question up, it might have been me, is regards to the board of health, the event that they had at the Wachusett.
Right, it was a combination regional board of health, police, fire.
And I'm sure that was in the works for a couple of weeks before it happened. It was a huge event.
They had been planning it for quite a while. I did not receive notice of it until the Friday before your selectman's meeting.
So, I guess that, I guess you would need to reach out to the department heads and say, when you have something. Even the fire, I don't think we mentioned the fire department had its open house. I don't think we mentioned that at our selectman's meeting, so.
I don't recall that we did.
So, we have in the past, though. So, that's, I, I, my case in that, I'd like them to be on our, our meetings invitations. That kind of, when it started, it was more for events and things like that, but it kind of turned into basically a meeting. Pretty much all we say is, is meetings, you know, things like that, you know, upcoming meetings of the board of selectmen, all the planning board and things, so. That's all. I mean, I've, I, I, we do, I do get the emails when, but then again, if, the emails come from you in some cases, so if you didn't have it to tell us a few weeks before, we wouldn't get an email anyway, so.
Right, so for, for most of them, you know, if, if you're subscribed to the, the listserv, you'll get, you know, notices in, in timely manner. Other things that, when I see them, I try to forward them onto you, just so you get them in advance, but this is better feedback, so we'll continue to work on this moving forward. I think that the key thing is to try to get as many items as we can on the announcements at the end of our meetings, because that way, we can be sure that even people who haven't signed up for the website notices, they'll, they'll still be hearing it when they watch your meeting.
Right, right. Thank you.
All right, uh, town administrator report.
Okay, so the first is that, I'm just trying to keep everyone abreast of where we stand on the snow and ice deficit. As of April 6th, we were running at $175,000 in the negative. That did not include the snowstorm we had the other day, and unfortunately, Nancy was telling me just before the meeting started tonight, that it looks like we're going to be getting another inch and a half of snow again, so, unfortunately, it keeps going on. We, we have, we, we do feel confident that we're going to have enough leftover balances within unspent FY-18 funds to cover the deficit, so that we won't have to rely on use of free cash, which is good, because then we can use the free cash for various different one-time expenditures, you know, at town meeting, et cetera. But I'll, I'll keep you updated as I get the next, uh, report from the town accountant. On the ABM measurement and verification, as you know, we've been kind of going back and forth over this for the past few months, and at a previous meeting, the board had decided to, to not seek a consultant to do the peer review of the ABM reports. ABM did provide us recently the spreadsheets that were required to be sent to the state that they had not previously submitted, so those have gone in. But now, the board has another decision point to make. Do you want to continue to work with ABM to do the annual measurement and verification and to have them submit? That costs us $15,000 a year. We, we have a, an opinion from town council that we do have the ability to cancel that obligation if we want to. We can forego working with ABM on the annual measurement and verification, but that does not remove our obligation to still submit the annual reports to DOE R during that term of the ESCO project, that 15-year term. So, but we have other options. We don't need to go with ABM. We could go with another firm. So, I'm just trying to get a sense from the board as to, you know, this is the time of year where we would start to ramp up to get the measurement and verification process started, so I'm looking to see what the board would like to do.
Before we take decisions, I'd like Pat on here.
That's exactly what I was going to say.
So, I think we should put it off till maybe a second.
I was going to ask that we do that, too. I don't think we can. I know Pat's very passionate.
That, this is passion.
Okay, very good. Um, the next item is, just to confirm, that the COA has moved now to the first congregational church as their temporary quarters, awaiting for the new senior center to be ready next year. I, I have to give Lisa and her staff so much credit. They've done a great job at planning and organizing and getting this move underway. The physical move of furniture, et cetera, actually happened today. This week, all the senior center activities are canceled. They expect to have everything start up Monday in their new home. And I also wanted to take time to thank the representatives from the church. They were working really hard with us to make sure that things went as smoothly as possible, and they've been extremely welcoming in, during this entire process. We do have issues with the phone still. The Verizon transition of the phone lines was supposed to happen actually yesterday. It still hasn't happened. We put public notices out to let people know that if they need to get in touch with the COA, that they can go through our offices, and we'll transfer the messages over. Karen Paray has been dogging this, trying to get them to get this done. We're hoping they'll be all set tomorrow, but in the meantime, the fallback is that people should be, feel free to contact us, and we'll get messages over to the COA.
And just to clarify, you did say it in the email, not, it's not that you folks woke up one day and said, "Oh, they're moving, we got to call the phone company."
Oh, no, this has been.
You contacted them well in advance.
Yes.
And they told us that, okay, you know, so just the public knows that we didn't drop the ball on this. We were, we were following up on it. I saw it in your email, so.
Right, this was all supposed to happen, actually, on Monday, but on Monday, Verizon was apparently inundated with a lot of the calls with the, the heavy rain causing complication with phone lines. So, their policy is that they have to handle repair calls first before they can do new order fulfillment, so we were pushed off, and we still aren't back on process.
Yep.
Just to let the board know that we are moving ahead with a culvert replacement engineering grant. As you recall, when we went through and approved the hazard mitigation plan, we talked about the fact that we'd now be eligible for looking for grants to help us do some culvert replacement and other work to try to minimize these, you know, flood damage issues and other hazards that we have around town. So, we're putting this one in for, for engineering expenses for the, the culvert that's located on Prescott Street, where the Washakam Brook goes through. So, we won't hear until July on the outcome of that, but it's a good first step for us to start moving ahead with some of these identified hazards. And then, in terms of other updates, on the House One budget did come in. The numbers from the House were about $11,000 on, over the governor's version, but as we've mentioned before, we're going to stick with the more conservative governor's local aid numbers for now, until we see what happens. We likely wouldn't see any final results in time for town meeting anyway, so, as I mentioned, you know, we'll probably continue to use the governor's number for revenue estimates, and we'll be going through that in more detail next week. And that's it for my report.
Thank you.
All right, first update, the senior center groundbreaking is May 5th at 11 o'clock. Everybody's invited. We didn't have a groundbreaking for police action, but we thought appropriate to do one for the senior center, and we hope you come.
Rain or shine.
Rain or shine. We're going to be digging, rain or shine.
Or snow.
I guarantee no snow that day.
All right, no guarantee.
It worked every time so far, so.
I think no more guarantee.
Other updates, they did put the fence around the property this week, and they are starting construction.
Well, I'm sorry, I, what was that?
Other updates.
What was the, I didn't hear what.
They put a fence up.
The temporary construction fence on the mixer site.
Okay, at the senior center, okay.
Invoices, CBA invoice number 5717, senior center for $17,850, and invoice number 5718, senior center for $18,134.78.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Telegram for $38.22 for the senior center.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cardinal construction for number 13506, 86240 for senior center. Is that cardinal construction?
No.
I don't know. I don't, I didn't think it was, I don't think we've had any cardinal construction invoices.
Let's put that on hold on that, okay. And Carl, your invoice number 13534, $196.18 for senior center.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Appointments and resignations concurrents in the following town administration appointments. You want to read those, Nita?
Sure, we have James Swalick for the Board of Assessors, David McCarrio, Conservation Commission, Jody Barnard for Cultural Council, Pat Indewish for Parks Facility Committee, Kevin Leclerc, Transportation Committee, Michael Mard for Fence Viewer, Mary Anne Schlen, Economic Development Task Force, Barbara Wyatt, Economic Development Task Force, Richard Simorano as Peg Equipment Co-ordinator, and this is for a term of three months to expire at the end of July at 2:50 a month for the stipend. And that's it for town administrator appointments.
End of June, right? It says.
So, the last night at the pegboard, the pegboard recommended that it be a three-month appointment, which would go through the end of July.
Okay. And considering going to reappoint David McCarrio to the Bylaws Committee, right, we need to make that motion.
Right, so that, that's a, a selectman's appointment. So, if you could vote to concur on the list of, concurrents on the town administrator appointments.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, I'm sorry.
And then I make a motion to appoint Dave McCarrio to the Bylaw Committee?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, meeting invitations and announcements, April 25th, 7:00 PM, special meeting of the Board of Review and signed warrants for May 21st, 2018, uh, meeting. I won't be there.
Well, I.
You won't be here.
I can't be here. I've got a, a work meeting.
Where's this special meeting of the Board of Selectmen?
25th.
Yeah, it's your standard workshop. You always do it the last Wednesday of the month in April so that we can do the final review of the warrant and signatures.
Should we, um...
We should have three people there, unless you want to...
Should we do it in May, what's that, May 2nd meeting?
We'll be ready probably by then, won't we?
Let's check on that, and we'll get back to you.
This is, um, that's, what's that, next Wednesday?
Yeah. Send an email out and try to determine what the best date is.
I think we better be at five, or since the...
Right.
Uh, May 5th, like you just said, 11, 11:00 AM, senior center groundbreaking ceremony, 120 Prescott Street, rain or shine?
Or snow.
And the only, the only other thing, if I could add, that this Sunday, the 22nd, at 1:00 PM is the West Boston Little League softball parade. So if people want to come out and cheer on the, the players, it starts at 1:00 in the center of town and goes right down to the A and B field.
Is there no snow?
I guarantee no snow. I'm done with that. Been good all, right every time.
Good.
And I have an announcement that I'd like to share. Just wanted to congratulate Deputy Mark Hopel for being named Region Two EMT of the Year. He has put in 38 years of being an EMT for the town, and I think it's wonderful that he's being recognized for his, his services.
Great.